Welcome. Thank you for joining us for this evening for our October regular meeting of the Kailua Neighborhood Board. This is a hybrid meeting, online and in person. So the first order of business that we're required to do for any hybrid meeting is a roll call. Josiah Akow? Present. Travis Council. Amber Granite. Kellyanne Kobayashi. David Laia, present. Jade Lyle, present. Mike Lee. Levani Lipton, present. Carol Muschero, present. Kate Ryder.
Present.
Present remotely. Claudine Tomasa.
Present.
Present remotely. Steve Trecker, present. Evan Weber, present. Gary Weller. John White.
Present Chair.
Present remotely. Donna Wong, present. Jeff Suckernick.
Present remotely Chair.
Present remotely, and I'm here. So we have established a forum with thirteen members present. Nine in person and four online. We'll move on to announcements. First, let's take a moment to remember Paul Doc Brennan, who passed away on September twenty-sixth at the age of eighty-four. Paul was a founding member and president of the Kailua Historical Society, where he shared a wealth of information about local historical and cultural sites. A resident of Mauna Wili since nineteen eighty-one, he was a leading proponent for restoring Hawaiian agricultural traditions in Mauna Wili and protecting and preserving Kaua Nui Marsh. Mahalo for his many important contributions to our Kailua community and our sincere condolences go out to his family. Our agenda has been modified as part of improving meeting efficiency. We will be using a three-minute timer. This is to improve discipline. Board business of committee motions is earlier in the agenda and reports have been split up. The objective tonight is to start our two presentations, not later than nine P M. Our second Thursday committee meetings will now be held indoors at the District Meeting Room at Kailua District Park. The District Meeting Room is right there in that building, so the second Thursday committee meetings will be indoors, starting next Thursday. There will be an informational workshop for the Kailua community regarding invasive little fire ants. This is a real problem. Waimeanalo has had the problem for a while, but they are a really severe pest, and it's going to take an all-hands effort to eradicate them, including testing. This workshop will be Tuesday, October tenth, from six to seven P M. at the Lani Kai Park Pavilion, and you can park on the grass for that event. Again, that's Tuesday, October tenth, six P M., Lani Kai Park Pavilion. Partners in Care is organizing a community resource map for homeless outreach in Kailua. Churches, volunteer groups, and individuals who are connected to this community and know of services are requested to help create the map. Access to the form is at B I T dot L Y slash Kailua Houseless Outreach. Please email Levani Lipton if you have any questions or need a direct link to the form, and her address is posted on our website. It's levani.knb@gmail.com. The City and County Department of Transportation Services has extended the deadline to collect data on parked cars for the Kailua Street Sweeping Study until Friday, October thirteenth. The public is encouraged to volunteer. A very simple task, just counting where the cars are parked at certain times. This data will be used to determine the best routes and timing for street sweeping, to remove debris from roadways before it enters our waterways. You can learn more at B I T dot L Y slash Kailua Street Sweep Presentation, and sign up is at B I T dot L Y slash Kailua Street Sweep. The idea here is on streets that make the most difference. There will be no parking probably once a month for a couple of hours, so the street sweepers can sweep the whole street, not just sweep around the parked cars, which is very ineffective. Are there any other announcements for this evening's meeting? Okay. Our next order of business is a board vacancy. Now, this is for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. We have one open seat. It's in Subdistrict Two, which is Enchanted Lake. Board members may nominate candidates to fill the vacancy. Proof of subdistrict residency is required. Candidates may speak for three minutes prior to the board voting. Are there any nominees for the vacancy? Online? Okay, well, I'm pleased to make a nomination. I nominate Cheyenne Lobu, Enchanted Lake resident, real estate agent, very knowledgeable in our community, and also a former member of the Kailua Neighborhood Board. Cheyenne served for the month of June this year, filling a different vacancy. Is there a second for this nomination? David Laia? All right, so motion has been made and seconded. Cheyenne, can you tell us a little bit more about yourself, please? Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cheyenne Lobu. I've lived here almost five and a half years. Moved here from the mainland. Always lived in Kailua, always plan on living in Kailua. This is my forever home. So I do love my town and want to serve my town, and that's why I'm running for a board member position. I really want to make things better for Kailua, and like I said, I'm here for the long term, not going anywhere, and just want to make this place the best that we can. As he said, I'm a real estate agent. I'm a mom of four kids. My youngest just turned eighteen today, so. What else? Yeah, that's about it, I guess. If you guys have any questions for me.
Okay, questions for Cheyenne? Donna Wong?
The Kailua Neighborhood Board has worked very hard over the years to not have illegal vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods. What do you think of?
I remember that question last time. Well, first of all, it's illegal, so actually there's no reason to even talk about it. And, yeah, that's about it.
What do you mean by that?
Well, it's illegal, so there's nothing I can say or do, so there really is no comment about it. I mean, I stand behind the law and what they say.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? John White?
Thank you, Chair. As a real estate agent, are you for or against monster homes?
In Kailua?
Of course.
Specifically? I am definitely not for them personally.
And why is that?
Because I feel like Kailua is just a small beach town, a lot of neighborhoods, and it's kind of hard to house that many people on that kind of lot in a neighborhood, considering cars and noise and people and things of that nature.
Would you find yourself at a conflict of interest if we came to some type of decision making or vote with the board to approve or deny a monster home, even though it may be a lucrative business transaction for a real estate agent?
I'm sorry, so your question is what exactly would I, what would I say?
We had an issue recently on Kabai Nui Street, a monstrosity that was going up that the town ended up speaking in opposition. So as a real estate agent, if we were to come up with a situation where we needed to vote to deny some type of monstrosity to be built, would that be a conflict of interest for you because of your business?
No, it would not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jade Lyle?
Cheyenne, are you aware of the Ko'olau Poko Sustainability Plan?
What is it again?
The Ko'olau Poko Sustainability Plan.
Actually, I'm not. Apologies.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
I can definitely research that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's call for the vote. This will be a roll call vote. Please. Josiah Akow? Aye. Travis Council? Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi? David Laia? Aye. Kellyanne, are you online?
Oh, abstain.
Abstain. Jade Lyle? Aye. Mike Lee? Levani Lipton? Aye. Carol Muschero? Aye. Kate Ryder?
Abstain.
Abstain. Claudine Tomasa?
Abstain.
Abstain. Steve Trecker? Aye. Evan Weber?
Abstain.
Abstain. Gary Weller? John White?
Aye.
Aye. Donna Wong? Abstain. Jeff Suckernick?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Nine in favor, zero opposed, five abstentions. A motion does not carry. All right. Okay, we move on to HPD and HFD reports. Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, hi. I'm Lieutenant Johnny Agoo, Honolulu Police Department, out here in Kanohe Station. I have the statistics, the reports for September twenty-twenty-three for Kailua. There was one motor vehicle theft versus one the previous month. There were eight burglaries reported versus ten the previous month. There were thirty-four general thefts versus fifty-two the previous month. There were five U E M Vs or car break-ins versus eight the previous month. There was one robber reported versus zero the previous month. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions for HPD tonight. Jade Lyle?
The, at Kailua Beach Park, on the boat ramp side of the park, there is, it almost looks like a permanent storehouse something. Is that allowed? Is that going to, I mean, is that ongoing? Because it's definitely not something that's set up every morning.
Are they selling something?
No.
Renting anything out, or?
No, no, no. I think, I think what they're doing is assisting the homeless.
Oh, if it's an outreach thing, generally for us on midnights, we don't deal with that problem except for like
If it's a problem.
Do the stored property ordinance, or if we get called, that tends to be more of a day watch problem. I'm sorry, I'm midnight, yeah, so I work from six at night to six in the morning, so different set of problems. That specifically, I wouldn't be able to tell you because I haven't responded to anything like that. If it's, if it seems to be a problem, like if they're blocking traffic, if they're doing things that may be suspect, definitely call nine one one. Somebody, somebody come check it out. If it's an outreach thing, that would be more along the lines of like our community policing team or people like that.
Because I've had lots of people ask, because we know that we've had homeless issues in that area by boat ramp.
Right, right.
That periodically you guys will go out and sweep and tell people move along, move along.
Like I said, if it's a specific issue.
Yeah, I didn't, I just didn't have an answer to tell people.
Yeah.
If outreach area was acknowledged and known and, you know, if they're ongoing. So as long as I have an answer now, I can answer people, you know.
So like I said, if there's anything kind of suspicious going on, definitely not one right away. If it's, if they're blocking the roadway, they shouldn't be doing it. We could just go and move along and stuff.
None of that.
If there's any criminal activity, then definitely we want to be, you know, notified of or anything like that, and we'll address it as it comes. But I don't, I don't have anything to show that there's like an ongoing thing at the boat ramp.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for HPD? David Laia?
Yes, on an Aulua Road in the Mauna Wili area, there seems to be two encampments occurring there. I noticed that the police officers did go into one of them, and I just wondered if the intention is to also go to the other encampment that's along that same side?
Um, if there's any type of encampment or enforceable activity, then definitely it should be addressed by us, yeah. Again, that's another one that, like some of the plainclothes units or the outreach people do, because it's not necessarily strictly an enforcement issue. They're also trying to get them resources and things like that, so they bring other partners in the community to see if they can move them out of there. If it turns into like a trespassing issue, then that's more like where we do more enforcement stuff, yeah. If we come across stolen items or anything like that, that's more of an enforcement stuff. So any, for us on midnights, we do ongoing, you know, we don't necessarily call them sweeps. We address the problem that, that is presented, yeah. If it's a problem of trespassing on private property, you know, unfortunately, we need the property owner there to give them the warning and all of those things. So there are steps that has to be taken, but we tend to keep track of the different encampments in and around the entire Windward Side area, and then sometimes it's just hard to get to them day in and day out, you know what I mean? Because the, I mean, I'm sure you see, sometimes we go, they'll leave for a little while, then they come back, then we got to readdress it. We're having a hard time, of course, giving them permanent solutions to being not in that area, you know what I mean? But it's definitely an ongoing issue. We deal with houseless issue on a daily basis, yeah.
Other questions? Jade Lyle?
On the same topic of encampment, you are aware of the encampment on the hillside above Windward Boats?
Yeah.
Because you can see those tarps, and the other morning you could see smoke, as if they were having a cookout of some sort. And I get houseless issues. My concern is fire.
Of course.
And that is a very dry hillside that backs onto the high school property at the far end. It's into that marsh and all the way into Ha'ama Kua, and that would be, I mean, that's a wind tunnel right there, so that fire is going to push that way and hit houses, or it's going to come back into Kailua. So as long as you guys are aware of it, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Donna Wong?
Do you know if the homeless are still along Kauai Nui Marsh? On the Ma'oka side below Kalahao Hillside, I mean, Kalahao High School?
So that specific one, we've done, again, we've done enforcement actions over there, but then again, it does tend to come and go, yeah, like we'll go, sometimes they'll leave, sometimes they'll come back. Oftentimes they'll come back. We know that to be true, yeah. And then, like I said, sometimes the issues that we run into is the actual homeowner being willing to pursue the trespassing violations or anything of those nature. If it's a city and county property, we have a little more leeway, but also oftentimes there's a zoning, not a zoning, a property right issue, who actually owns the property, yeah. That, that's some of the hurdles that we run into. Ongoing, on view, criminal violation, no problem.
Thank you.
Things, it tends to be a little more difficult, yeah.
Evan Weber?
Well, officer, all for being with us. Sorry if this was written somewhere. I couldn't find it in our materials, but just the location of the motor vehicle death this month?
Oh, I don't have that on my printout, but if you go through the G I S section, honolulupd.org, it shows you the exact locat, well, not exact location, it'll give you like an icon of where it is, and it'll give you cross streets.
Okay, and then just a follow-up request. Usually it's, you know, not too many of accidents or deaths each month, so if it's not too much trouble, if you could include the location, as we continue to monitor traffic and safety issues in the community, it's just helpful to support our tracking, especially for the Transportation Committee.
Okay, so you're, you're asking for locations of critical fatal accidents or just a generalized area of?
Yeah, of any motor vehicle deaths or severe accidents, basically.
So more, more, more where there's serious harm or property damage or anything, not just regular fender benders and stuff, because, sorry to say, often on the daily.
Whatever's, I don't want to make too much trouble, basically, but yeah.
That, that would have to push up, because the way they track that, that's a traffic specific one, so we'll have the information available, but we have to go through traffic, and then there's like a grading criteria as far as, if what I'm understanding right, so like regular fender benders, it's basically, you know, Hawaii has no fault, yeah. It's, we'll come, we'll do a report, and everybody, if they're able to drive away, they go along the way. If they're injured, it becomes something different, yeah, then, then, you know, there's EMS involved, sometimes fire, sometimes hospital, and if there's any kind of impairment involved, it changes the classification. If there's serious bodily injury and/or death, then it changes the classification. So those things, specifically, we may be able to find it on the traffic site, you know what I mean? Because like honolulupd.org, there's a lot of information on there. It just does tend to be tedious to try and scroll through it, but for something like that, that may have to be a request that we push up through traffic, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to make too much work for you guys. I know you have your hands full, so if there's some easy way to do it, that'd be great. If not, something to think about, I'm sure it'd be helpful for other communities.
I'll definitely put that up our chain.
Cool, mahalo.
Sure.
All right, I don't see any other questions, but I'll relay one from Member Gary Weller, who's not here tonight. Last night at Kahhi Shopping Center, he observed a civilian in a vehicle with a blue light on the dashboard and had a brief conversation with the driver. You know, are you a police officer? And the driver said no. He seemed to recall that it's illegal for anyone to display a blue light on a dashboard unless they're a police officer. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. It's definitely illegal. So in that situation, especially if the guy tells him no, he's impersonating a police officer. There should be no blue lights other than authorized Honolulu Police Department. In that situation, if he had a chance, get the license plate, no need for confrontation, call the police, they'll come and check it out. But then there also is, I don't want to get too far into it here, but we do have plainclothes officers that are marked in different ways, yeah. But if it's official business, when the guy asks him, hey, are you a police officer, you should automatically show him his, either his badge, his credentials, or his identification card.
Okay, that squares with what makes sense, and I appreciate putting that word out to the community. Mahalo.
Definitely, thank you.
Okay, any questions from the audience for HPD tonight? Online? Okay, mahalo. We'll move on to Honolulu Fire Department.
Hi, good evening. I'm Captain Pangilinon from the Kailua Fire Station, and I'll be providing the statistics for the previous month, confirmed number of incidents in the Kailua Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month. Should you have any questions, please email the HFD's Community Relations Office at First, I'd like to go over information previously requested. Wildland Fire Preparedness. The Ready, Set, Go Hawaii Action Guide is designed to inform and empower our communities to prevent, prepare, and plan for wildfire, for a wildfire incident. Contained within the guide are useful checklist to, one, eliminate fuels and create a defensible space around your home; two, create a family disaster plan, including important contact and medical information; and third, have your emergency supply kit assembled and ready for evacuation. Visit fire.honolulu.gov to review the action guide. Now, Wildland Fire Maps. The HFD partners with the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization in working with communities across Hawaii on wildfire prevention, mitigation, and planning activities through proactive, collaborative, and forward-thinking projects. Visit hawaiiewildfire.org/home for more information, resources, and tools. Next is the incidents for the month of September twenty-twenty-three. For fires, we have one structure fire, zero wildland or brush fires, one nuisance fire, zero cooking fires, and eleven activated alarms with no fire. Emergencies, we had one hundred and six medicals. Motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians was zero. Motor vehicle crash or collisions was six. Mountain rescues was zero. Ocean rescues was three, and hazardous materials incidents were one. Fire safety tips and announcements. Fire safety tip: this is Fire Prevention Month. The National Fire Protection Association sponsors Fire Prevention Week, F P W., which is observed from October eighth to the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. As the national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October, this year's theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? Unattended cooking is the leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. What can you do? The good news is you can prevent most cooking fires and burns. Help keep your family safer with these simple but effective tips. Turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Watch what you heat. Set a timer to remind you that you are cooking. Have a kid and pet-free zone, at least three feet around the stove and areas where hot food or drink is prepared or carried. Are there any questions?
Questions tonight for Honolulu Fire Department? Online? Anyone in the audi, David Laia?
Yeah, I would just like, in the light of the Maui situation, are there any vulnerable spots or high-risk areas identified in the Kailua districts? or high-risk areas identified in the Kailua districts? And if so, where are they?
We do have areas of concern. For the Kailua area, like we've talked to with HPD, we have the areas behind Wunner boats. We have the Kauai Nui Marsh areas, Kalahaila hillsides, the Lani Kai hillsides, which are on the Lani Kai side and on the Enchante Lake side. Also, the backside of Bellows is an area of concern for us.
Evan Weber.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I just wanted to mahalo HFD. Some institutions in my community, the folks that I represent, got together recently in light of the Lahaina fires about the Kaiba Ridge pillbox area. So Kauhaus School, Midpac, Blue Stone Association, and Lani Kai Association have been kind of self-organizing meetings, trying to figure out how they can begin to have community preparedness. And we were grateful to have HFD join us at a recent meeting last week or the week before. So did want to let folks know that that is happening. Some of that self-organization we saw in Lahaina, that the community was able to respond a lot faster than, you know, government entities, even nonprofits, et cetera. So I think the more that we can lean into those ties in our community, the better, and start making plans for the real risks that do exist and lie ahead. But one of the things that came up that I did just want to underscore is the, you know, the, the ongoing traffic challenges in the Lani Kai Loop do present a real, real risk in light of the Lahaina fires and that high-risk area that HFD mentioned, which, you know, on paper in some ways is even riskier and more dangerous than Lahaina Town was because it really is that a one-loop. Lahaina was a two-way road and the hillside is a lot bigger and there's not a whole lot in between the hills and the ocean. So yeah, just want to, you know, continue to push, push urgency on solutions there as we're thinking about fire planning. That's not something that the, that the community institutions can handle on their own. Do need governmental action from the county and the state.
All right, any other questions?
One follow on with these various places that have been identified. Some very notable places, Lani Kai, E Lakes, Bellows. Are there specific plans to mitigate against the risks? Whether it's community action or HFD-promoted plans? Can you share with us what, what those plans might be and, and timetables?
Oh, we're making a push for, to get out the message to communities. We have commercials out that explain, you know, just some tips where you can, to try to lessen the, the effects by cutting back your brush from your home. Just, you know, eliminating certain fuels around your properties, just to, you know, help protect property and belongings.
Okay, other questions? Anyone online? Hey, from the audience. Sir, if you could use the microphone, please. Follow up on Gary's question to HPD and also to the Police Department. Specifically, what kinds of notification plans are being worked out so that in the event of a pending disaster or at the first observation of something that's breaking out that could become a disaster? What sort of notification plans are being discussed and worked out? And within that same genre, what sort of community interaction in practice sessions with the governmental agencies to simulate such an event and have the community participate in some manner or another in the exercise of evacuation? What kinds of plans are being discussed in that specific area? I don't expect an answer tonight, but I'm hoping that there is thought being put into this. And when you do have appropriate time, that we could have a discussion of. Thank you.
Yes, from the Honolulu Fire Department's side, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push that question up our chain of command and get the most accurate explanation for you. And hopefully they'll have the results or the answers for next month's Neighborhood Board meeting.
All right, well, thank you so much. We'll move on to local agency reports, starting with the Board of Water Supply. Danny Ornalis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy Yanoz, I'm from the Border Water Supply. Unfortunately, Danielle couldn't make it tonight, but I will be Border Waters representative tonight. I'd like to start with the main break report for the month of September. There were two in September. First one was September 5th, that was a 12-inch main on Aulua Road. And second one, second one was on September 13th. That's an 8-inch main on Eliaina Street. Now, for the general, general water announcements, I'd like to talk about our Imagine a Day Without Water event. You are invited by Border Water Supply and its partners for this year's Imagine a Day Without Water event. The location is at Freshwater State Recreation Area in Wahihua. The date is Saturday, October 21st, 2023. And the time is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Here are the event details. There'll be more than 15 city, state, and community organization booths with interactive activities. You get to learn about the importance of One Water and the impacts of climate change today and in the future. And please join us for rain barrel and native seed workshops, ziriskate plant craft activities, freshwater fishing activities, and making genki balls, a bio remediation that removes pollutants from soil and water. Plus, eat ono food, play games, and win small prizes. More information can be found at www.bordofwatersupply.com/onewaterhawaii. And I'll put that in the chat box. But with that, I have completed my report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Border Water Supply tonight? David Laia.
Sorry, I'm hogging the mic here tonight. On Aulua Road, that drain or plumbing ditch, ditch that you folks are digging there, how long is that project expected to last?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that information, but I'll check with our construction section and see what they say and I'll report it. Oh, I guess Danielle will report it next, next month, but I'll ask them.
All right, other questions? Online? Avani Lipton.
Hi, this is just a general question because I don't want to make assumptions. Whenever there's a water main break, is it always due to like antiquated infrastructure? Or is it because someone hits a line? Or is it unique in each situation? Or is it basically the systems are falling apart?
There's a number of different reasons. It could be, like you said, the infrastructure is old, some, for example, the, the main breaks I just talked about, let me pull up that information real fast. Those pipes were installed from 1941 and 1959, so they could be really old. Could be something, like you said, someone hits something. It could also be water hammer, maybe somewhere, someone opens a valve too fast and it causes a water hammer and that causes a break in the pipe. So yeah, those are some reasons why there could be a main break.
Thank you.
Okay, and I've got one. You, you, you mentioned genki balls for water quality remediation. Has the Board of Water Supply formally endorsed and certifies the, the, the value of genki balls? Because that's, that's something we're looking at pursuing here in Kailua. And I'm wondering what formal position and scientific data Border Water Supply uses to make a determination on that.
Um, that, I unfortunately, I'm not sure, but I'll follow up with our conservation section. I know they'll be there at our event on the 21st, so they should be able to, to answer that question.
Yeah, yeah, please, please follow that up because there, there's an initiative to use genki balls here in Kailua. But there also seem to be some unanswered questions as to how much, how often, and what's the, what's the period of time that they remain effective? And, and, you know, how, how effective are they and is it seasonal? So if, if Border Water Supply already has a study and data, that would be of interest to us.
Yeah, for sure, I'll follow up with our conservation section on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, mahalo, we'll move on to Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Major Jordan Fox.
Chair, I had a question, I'm sorry.
John White.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Yanoz, there has been a lot of speed humps being installed in Kailua. People have approached me saying that because of the speed humps and the pressure created by the cars on the downward slope, that's, you drive over those at higher speed than actual speed bump. That it's, they thinking is starting to create cracks in their retaining walls on their property that weren't previously there. And of course, this is only a speculation, but if that is true, as the Board of Water Supply taking something like that into account to either reinforce or jacket the water lines near those speed humps to prevent breakages in the future? I doubt you have an answer right now, but if we could look into that and then also the questions that you got tonight, if you could have Danielle email the chair prior to next month's meeting would be great, so we can get up to speed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your question. As far as the jacket, jacketing the water lines, I'll follow up with our construction section. And I'll make sure to have Danielle email Chair and have these, the answers to these questions next month. But thank you for your question.
Okay, mahalo, Major Fox.
Chair, board members, members of the community, good evening. So I do have two guests with me this, this evening. I have Mr. Lance Lee, who's our Director of Installations and Logistics, and also have Ms. Leah Rothbaum, who is our Readiness and Environmental Protection Integration Liaison. So if you have any questions, please ask. Went to the Kailua Fall Festival, I think it was a great event and it's great to see these events kind of come back in a post-COVID world. So that leads into my next announcement. It's kind of a, a date marker for you all, February 24th, 2024. Marine Corps Base Kaniohi Bay is going to host Bay Fest. I have not been personally, but I know it used to be a big thing. And I think our headliner is Common Kings. So the base will be open to the community, to anyone with a valid government ID. Lastly, on 14 September, Marine Corps Base Hawaii is hosting Weed Warriors, which is a community cleanup event. So if anybody wants to come out, please do. I'll pass it over to Lance Lee for a separate announcement.
Thank you, Major Fox. Again, my name is Lance Lee, aloha, everybody. I am the Director of Installations and Logistics at Marine Corps Base Hawaii, also known as the S4. And I'm here today to tell you about an initiative that we are starting at Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Essentially, we are trying to improve our energy resilience. And so, as many of you know, there is no firm power generation here on the Wunner side. There is residential PV, maybe some businesses with rooftop PV, but there is no firm generation on the Wunner side. Our power comes from transmission lines that come over the Ko'ola Mountains. And so there is a single point of failure and, and vulnerability for us, all of us. And for Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Kaniohi Bay, that is something that is a concern for us. So something that we are going to initiate is a way to improve or analyze and improve our energy resilience, given what we've seen with hurricanes and the devastating impacts in Puerto Rico a few years ago, the East Coast, the Gulf Coast. What do you call it, typhoons in Guam more recently, and then of course fires in, in Maui. There is a, a challenge for us as an installation to provide the operational support to our tenant commands if we're out of power for a prolonged period of time. So what you will see relatively soon is a request for information. We're going to post a request for information online on a, on a government website that will enable developers, potential developers, as well as subject matter experts to help us address our resilience challenge. So essentially, a request for information is technology agnostic. It informs multiple people, like I mentioned, of our challenge and asks them to provide us with information as to how they best believe we could address our resilience challenge. So we should be issuing that or posting that around the first week of November. And then we'll have an industry day wherein we'll invite people that have provided us with information to the base. We'll take them around the base to look at the various locations that may be potentially developable. And from there, we'll receive their reports or whatever documents they provide us and then evaluate them and try to figure out what our best strategy is going forward. We are working with NAFAC Headquarters, NAFAC Pacific, and NAFAC Hawaii on this initiative. And so we're also working with HECO. We're in coordination with HECO. We've discussed our initiative with the Public Utilities Commission and the City and County Resilience Office. So we're, we're very excited about this initiative. It's something that we're diligently pursuing. So we wanted to get out and inform the public that it's something that we are doing and something that you all will see here relatively soon. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Levany Lipton.
So just to clarify, request for information is different than a request for proposal.
That is correct.
And then everything will be on-site on the base? Because I remember I was part of this working group at one point with HECO and there were some murmurings about doing some type of development in Kaniohi Bay that had to do with energy. And I know there were residents of that area who were really concerned about doing something or building something like in the water, near the water. So my question was, is it going to be on land? And what are some of the, do you have any idea about what are some of the ideas for energy resilience?
Sure, okay, I'll confirm your, your first. Yes, a request for information is not a request for a proposal. Our strategy is to link with Hawaiian Electric Company. They intend to issue another request for proposal, probably late part of 2024. So we'll go through our process, evaluate the inputs, and then work with HECO to incorporate our requirement into their upcoming RFP. As far as where, it would be on the Bokapu Peninsula, so Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Kaniohi Bay. As far as technologies, we are technology agnostic, so we're inviting any and all opportunities. So things we may anticipate are PV and battery energy storage. So that's probably most likely. It could involve any combination of PV and battery. It could be wind, it could be geothermal, it could be a firm generation capability like a plant. We just don't know. So that's why we're, we're keeping it open-ended and it's just going to be, this is our challenge. So that's why we're keeping it open-ended and it's just going to be, this is our challenge. We have a requirement of roughly 18 megawatts. And so tell us, how should we best solve this? The Department of Defense, Department of Navy, and our higher quarters have established a goal of being able to be self-sustaining for a minimum of 14 days. So that's really the target. It's minimum 14 days, given a prolonged weather event or power outage.
Thank you.
Don Wong.
I have two questions now. Okay, is there geothermal on the base?
We don't know. We we have met with-
I have a map. Doesn't show any on the base.
Yes, we have met with University of Hawaii, and they have a map. And they believe there is geothermal potential on the windward side as well as in Waimea, but we don't know.
But not on the base. Okay.
We don't know.
Okay. My real question then is, is the base looking at using non-fertile water for water the golf course?
Yes. You probably saw the Hawaii News Now segment that was on a couple of days ago. What wasn't in the segment is that we have used recycled water to irrigate the Clipper Golf Course for many years, on and off. That's not a well-known fact, but yes, we have used R2 water, recycled water, to irrigate the golf course for many years. In fact, in our 2006 master plan, it talks to it and said that we used about 500,000 gallons a bay of recycled water at the Clipper. So the challenges that we faced most recently is we took the system down for maintenance and then tried to bring it back up. The requirements changed, and so now we're having a very difficult time re-establishing approval. And the good news is that we have a very big project that should be awarded sometime this fiscal year, that will negate the need for this contact chamber that the DOH is requiring.
Evan Weber.
Yeah, Mahalo for your presentation. Just wanted to clarify. The 18 megawatts and the purpose of energy resiliency, you said it's to ensure 14 days of power for the base. So, all right, that was a good suspense for what I was about to ask. Yeah, the the question is, is part of the firm power to serve the community as well? Or and in an event of emergency, would that be a special consideration? Or is it really just for the base and you're just here to kind of inform us?
Minimally the base, but if a proposal came in that was sufficient enough to provide power in excess of our requirement that could be used by the community, yes, we'd be all for that.
Okay. And it'll be kind of have redundancies and create interconnectedness with HECO? And that's why they're involved, basically?
Correct.
Great. David Laia.
Three main questions. First, hydrogen power. I know it was a project that was underway several years ago. I'm wondering if if there's still activity and and interest in that area.
I assume you're referring to hydrogen fuel cell vehicles. We did have several hydrogen fuel cell vehicles a number of years ago. They were rented through the General Services Administration. That lease ran out, and so our vehicles went away. We do still have a hydrogen fueling station on base. Hasn't been used in a while, obviously. But yes, it was used for vehicle charging. And like I said, we don't have those vehicles anymore. I think from what I have seen of the GSA and just general public, hydrogen fuel cell vehicles are not all that common. You know, Toyota has a Mirai, and so there are a few, but they're not very common. And so as our internal combustion engine vehicles are replaced, they will be replaced by, the requirement is zero emission vehicles, but in all likelihood, they will be electric vehicles.
Second question, the coconut rhinoceros beetle was known to be brought in to the state through military facilities, not Kaniuei, frankly, but 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 known to be brought in through the military. And I'm wondering, is the military have a specific plan to support the eradication of the coconut rhinoceros beetle?
Sir, that's a really good question. I know that we are tracking coconut rhinoceros beetles. We have had coconut rhinoceros beetles on our installations. I don't think we've had any on Kaniuei Bay, but I think we had some at Puulua Range Training Facility. So our natural resources folks are very well aware. They have traps or monitoring stations, but I'm not aware of any in the last several years at least. So I can't say that we have a plan to eradicate them, but we are monitoring.
And the very last question is to do with the Pyramid Rock Body Surfing Competition that used to occur prior to the COVID shutdown. Is that going to be coming back as well?
Not my area, but we can ask.
Probably about four, four to five years ago, and it was sponsored by Wounded Warriors, I believe.
We have had other surf contacts, shortboard, longboard, boogie board, and all that at Pyramid too, that we're hoping to publish.
Okay, online, Eric Weller.
I have three questions. One, the University of Hawaii, well, it's a statement. The University of Hawaii in the 90s did an intensive study on geothermal on the base. Back in those days, it wasn't practical, but now with the new technologies in geothermal, it might be. But they did qualify that the base could have geothermal energy. How much energy does the wave device provide?
Sir, we've had a number of different wave energy conversion devices on base that have been tested over the last 15 or so years. So I can't speak specifically, but generally speaking, the amount of power from these WECs is fairly minimal.
And then my last question is, if you do consider this with, did you say 13 megawatts?
18.
18. You might want to include the Kailua Sewage Treatment Plant operation in in that amount of electricity you use, because that's your final processing out to sea. And if they didn't have electricity, you wouldn't be able to get rid of your sewage.
Well, actually, to clarify, our effluent meets their effluent. So we don't feed the, we're not an influent to the Kailua or Aikahi wastewater treatment plant. Our effluent meets with their effluent. So in essence, we dilute their effluent, but we don't contribute to their treatment requirement.
But but don't they have to pump it down through the pipe and get it out to the ocean?
We have a common outfall, yes, but as far as treatment, no.
No, I understand that, but if if Kailua Town didn't have any electricity and the sewage treatment plant didn't have any electricity, and you were still operating on the base producing sewage, how would you pump it out to the sea if they didn't have electricity there?
Right. I I understand. We we pump our effluent out and they pump their effluent out. So how they would operate if they didn't have power and we did, I'm not quite sure. But to your point, we have thought about community benefit and how our energy resilience initiative could benefit things like, like you said, that Aikahi wastewater treatment facility.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
John White, online.
Thank you, Chair. Just one question. I would like to request that the Kailua Neighborhood Board be included in this industry day when you guys do meet on base, if that is a possibility. Thank you.
Claudine Tamasa, online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lee, I just want to clarify. You're you're not reconsidering wave energy anymore?
A totally different initiative. So we still host the Wave Energy Test Site, or WETS, at Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Kaniuei Bay. There is currently a wave energy conversion device, or WEC, that is at Pearl Harbor, awaiting a weather window to come over and tie into the WETS. So we still support it. It's just a different initiative. And our hosting of the WETS is really a way of helping to develop that wave energy technology. But it's it's not mature enough to be commercially viable yet.
Thank you.
Other questions online? Amber Granite.
Hi, just a couple of questions. Does the energy resilience plan include and/or are there already base houses that have PV? And or is that part of what you might be including in the energy resilience plan? And then second question, because you said wind power, and that means wind turbine. Even considering wind turbines, I don't know if that's something that this community wants, but do you have any even the bare bones of thought of where you would be thinking about placing those if you had wind turbines? Two questions.
Okay, let's see. The first question, we do have PV arrays on homes. We have carport PV arrays throughout the base. We do have rooftop PV arrays on several of our buildings already. So what I'm referring to is a larger scale. And we do not have battery energy storage right now. So essentially, the power that our PV arrays generate is consumed during the course of the day. And for us, like like you all, your power peak load is in the evening. And so what we need to do is have a capability of generating and storing power through PV and then being able to discharge that power in the evening when it's dark. As far as wind, I just threw that out there as an example. Like I said, we are technology agnostic, and so there may be technologies out there that we are not aware of. The things that we are aware of are the technologies that I mentioned, PV and battery, geothermal, wind, a generation plant. We just don't know. And so that's why the RFI is written to be very open-ended. Does that answer your question?
Mahalo, yes.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to jump in here. As a former environmental inspector for the Army, it would really be helpful, I think, to remind the public that DOD environmental standards are generally more strict than the state requirements. I think that would put a lot of minds at ease to, for the civilians to be reminded that in most of these circumstances, the DOD requirements for environmental are way stricter than the state of Hawaii requires. Because I think that would ease some minds.
That that is a great point, and you're 100% correct. We are bound by federal laws, as you know. So Hawaii has the Hawaii Environmental Protection Act, for example. We are bound by the National Environmental Policy Act. We are bound by the National Historic Preservation Act, multitude of other requirements. So for us, especially on the peninsula, we have a lot of natural culture and historical resources that we are, we do a very good job, I'll say, protecting and preserving. We've been recognized about 30 times by the Secretary of the Navy and Secretary of Defense as far as our cultural resource program, our natural resource program. And so there are a lot of great initiatives, a lot of great people that work in our Environmental Compliance Protection Division at Marine Corps Base Hawaii. And thankfully, I get to work with them. Thank you.
Okay, other questions online? Okay, Representative Lisa Martin.
Yes, I I'm sorry if I if I was unclear. I didn't I didn't mean to imply that we don't need to. It's just, oh, okay, got it. Yes, right, right. Yes. Yes, so we are anticipating it being in the FY24 budget. And we have been seeking this Milcon Project, Military Construction Project, for, boy, at least 15 years. And through our Codell and especially Rep Tukuda, she's really been pushing for this project. It looks very promising that it's going to be included in the FY24 budget. And so the long story is, the contact chamber that the DOH requires of us in order to pump F, our R2 effluent to the Clipper Golf Course would have to be demolished in order to execute this military construction project. And so since we're anticipating this project in FY24, it doesn't make sense for us to pursue a design and then construction because we just tear it out anyway in in very short order. And so that's why we're not going to pursue the contact chamber to get R2, because when we get this project in '24, in all likelihood, it'll probably be finished in '26, maybe early '27. Then we'll have R1 water, which is of higher quality, and we will not need a contact chamber to pump our R1 effluent to the Clipper Golf Course. And in fact, we'll have much more flexibility to use our effluent elsewhere. So industrial purposes and irrigation. So anyway, the the challenge for me and my team is figuring out what we're going to do with all this R1 water. So good problem to have.
All right, any other questions? Yes, sir. You could use the microphone, please, for O'Leary.
The question was regarding the other military operations on Oahu. Are any of them, at this present time, self-sufficient for a 14-day event? Or will you be the first one that enacts?
That's a good question. I would say the Navy is pursuing a power plant and PV array and battery energy storage through Hawaiian Electric Company. So once those are in place and operational, I think they will be, they will have that 14-day capability before us. The Army pursued a power plant roughly starting in 2007 timeframe at Schofield Barracks. They have a, what they call a Schofield Generation Station, about a 50-megawatt plant at Schofield. Notwithstanding some grid challenges and things like that, that plant has the capability of islanding Schofield. So yes and no. But anyway, that's kind of where the Army and the Navy are. I don't I don't know about the Coast Guard, Air Force Joint Base. And so they'll be latched on to this PV and battery and power plant that I mentioned with the Navy. So we are, we're all pursuing essentially the same things. All are probably aware that the Army privatized their electrical utilities through Hawaiian Electric. And so Hawaiian Electric operates the plant at Schofield, and they're also responsible for the infrastructure. So I understand they're they're trying to address some of the the infrastructure grid shortfalls that may challenge their ability to island and get their power distributed throughout Schofield Barracks.
Right, my understanding is the Schofield Barracks Generation Project was 50 megawatts.
50 megawatts, right.
And since there is no generation on the windward side, we're relying on cables going over the Ko'olau mountain range that that previous Hawaiian Electric exploration was to try to power critical infrastructure, police, fire, hospitals, wastewater treatment plant. So I I think that there's a potential of dovetailing your proposal with the Hawaiian Electric studies that would not only benefit Marine Corps Base Hawaii, but potentially could benefit all of windward Oahu with the police, fire, hospitals, wastewater treatment in the event of a prolonged outage on the windward side. So, you know, that needs to be looked at, but it it sounds like it would dovetail with what Hawaiian Electric had already been studying.
Yes.
John White.
All right, thank you. Great, great.
Great, you're a great speaker, Mr. Lee. Thank you for your information. The power generating station on Schofield, kind of a two-part question, is that a fossil fuel generation station? And then on the second part, would, if the RFI showed that a fossil fuel generating facility was the most effective and efficient, would that, would that be curtailed by the mandate for clean energy? Or because it's a military installation, would that be allowable to operate those installations?
Great questions, Mr. White. I would say, to answer your first question, the Schofield Generation Station has a requirement to operate on 3 million barrels of biofuel a year. So beyond that, they would be on diesel. But predominantly, they run on biofuel, which obviously is much more costly. They are operating as what they call a peaking plant, so it's not running 24/7. It has quick start capabilities, so it runs when there is grid instability and/or when Schofield needs the power. As far as a generation plant on K Bay, if that were to be proposed, after talking with the Hawaiian Electric Company and the PUC, and, you know, like you said, the state's Clean Energy Initiative, the requirement would be that it would have to run on biofuel. But because of, one, the cost, two, the fact that we have roughly 2 million gallons of jet fuel on the base at any given time, our ask would be that it be at least biofuel-capable. So in the event of an emergency, maybe H3 is cut off, there are no trucks able to get onto the base to bring in biofuel, the plant would be capable of running off of jet fuel.
Thank you.
All right, a lot of information. I don't see any other questions. Major Fox, was there anything else that you wanted to discuss? Okay, mahalo. Okay, we'll move on to resident and community concerns. Anybody can raise any issue, and we just ask that you limit it to about three minutes. Are there any resident and community concerns this evening online? Earlier this evening on our agenda, we had a... John White, you have a community concern?
Yes.
Oh, please go ahead.
Thank you again, Chair. Just to reiterate what I spoke earlier to the Board of Water Supply, I've had a few residents contact me with that concern of the speed humps and the pressure created from the vehicles impacting the downward side of that speed hump and potentially causing cracks in the foundation of retaining walls. I don't know if that is something that was looked at or if that's something that we can measure. And if so, they would like to know who would be responsible if that was the case, that the speed humps and the pressure created by the vehicles is creating that problem. So I just wanted to bring that up in this part of the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, the majority of speed humps that have been recently installed are on state roads. So I think that would be appropriate to forward to Governor Green's representative this evening. Okay. No other answers online? Okay, earlier this evening on our agenda, we had a board vacancy, and we had 14 members present, and the vote was nine in favor, zero opposed, and five abstentions. Since that time, three more board members have joined the meeting. We've gone four months without the seat for Enchanted Lake being filled. I would just like to provide an opportunity. Is there any member who would like to put this back on the agenda so more members could participate in the decision? Mr. Trecker?
Yes. Yes, I would like to put it back on the agenda. Could you clarify what percentage or number is required to pass a resolution like this?
Ten.
Even though there's three more people, it's still ten?
Yeah, it's ten, or we could have 10 members present, and it requires 10 to pass a motion.
Thank you.
If we have 19 members, it's also 10 to pass a motion. So there's a motion to consider it again. Is there a second? Jade Lau? This is a motion to add back into the agenda consideration of the board vacancy. Is there any discussion on the motion? John White?
Chair, would we be out of order bringing this up after it has already come up on the agenda?
According to Neighborhood Assistant, no.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Donna Wong?
I have a procedure question. Can you bring up the, once a motion is defeated, can you bring up that same motion at the same meeting? Or do you have to wait? It's been practiced in the past that you had to wait until the next meeting to bring up the same motion that failed?
You can add an item to the agenda. It'll just take 2/3, so 13.
That wasn't my question. This motion was acted on, and it failed. So can a failed motion be brought up again at the same meeting? Or does it have to go to the next meeting, which has been the practice for all the meetings?
It can come up again.
It can? That hasn't been the practice in the past.
From the guidance that I was given, we can revisit this as long as it's added, as long as the motion is made to revisit it.
Okay, I have a favor. Can you ask, can you find in the neighborhood plan where it says that? Because if this is going to be the practice from now on, I think the board needs to know that. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? John White?
It's my two cents. I think we should table this and put it on the agenda for the next meeting so there's no confusion. Thank you.
Okay. Aiden Smalls?
I agree with Donna. I've been on the board 20 years, and we never discussed the same motion at the same meeting, the motion that was defeated.
Okay, other discussion? Sorry, can amend a motion? Okay. I think we want to make certain we're on sound ground. So, Mr. Trecker, I would suggest that we table this until we can make certain. I know that Spencer Johnson checked with the deputy at NCO, who advised me that it was appropriate or legal, rather. But we certainly want to be above board. A motion withdrawn. And board vacancy, you know, for another month will appear on our agenda next month. Okay, next order of business. Mayor and Governor Reports, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative.
All right, now I am unmuted. Jim Meyer.
We hear you, Jim.
Hello, everybody.
Nice to see you.
Yes, we gave Shane the night off, but she was helpful for me when I had some stuff. And we really, even though our department didn't have any direct involvement with the Lahaina Fire, just that put us in a different mode to just, you know, reflect on what we have done here in the past for preparation and with the Fire Department and all the other agencies. And really, it's such a tragedy in Maui, but the good that will come out of it for Oahu is I think we will be better prepared going forward. Just going back on some stuff that, some homework I had here, there was a request about the crosswalk repainting at Kaileua Road and Kanehe Street, and apparently that has been, work order's been put in for the repainting of that intersection, that crosswalk. I don't have timing on that, but it has been initiated. Likewise, I guess there was some flooring issues at the Kaileua District Park, the red flooring in the pavilion, and that is apparently going to be resurfaced by the parks employees in-house at the same time as the renovation of the adjacent restrooms. And I believe that's going to be this month, October. Lastly, there was some concerns about the bathrooms. And last month, I actually did a tour of the various bathrooms in the parks in Kaileua personally at different times of the day and took some pictures. I actually showed those to the mayor, showed those to the Parks Director. There is a proposal right now with Parks and Recreation to do some supplemental cleaning with a special project unit, both in Windward Oahu as well as on the Leeward coast, to see if they can get those bathrooms in better shape towards the end of the day. Now, I did go early. I went at 8:00 in the morning and at 10:00 in the morning. And, you know, the bathrooms, they didn't look great, but they didn't look terrible. They had paper, they were reasonably clean. But as the day goes on, I can imagine maybe that situation would deteriorate. So I'm hopeful that this special project unit that DPR is proposing will be able to assist with that. A couple other notes, this isn't really kind of official stuff on my list, but I just want to tell you, since it's my department, about 11 months ago, we put up a non-traditional sign at the Olamana Trail. And it really more discussed where the fatalities had been in the previous 10 years. Didn't tell anybody what to do, but it was just more of like, hey, this is where people are passing away. And I'm going to knock on wood that we have not, to my knowledge, had not only no fatalities, but actually no injuries at the Olamana Trail since we put that sign up. You know, it was either yesterday or the day before, there were two injured people at the Lani Kai Pillbox Trail, two in one day. I forget what the injuries were. Both were traumatic injuries, not life-threatening, but they required EMS, they required the Fire Department, they required the helicopter. So around the island, we're actually looking at non-traditional signage because beware of, don't do this. I'm just not sure how much people pay attention to those. But, you know, some of the ones, there was just some that were put up by Coco Head, by one of the nonprofits, the Coco Head Trail. And, you know, the Coco Head Trail and the Diamond Head Trail are by far the highest volume of rescues on Oahu, but they aren't the most lethal trails. Probably Olamana Trail's the most lethal trail, followed by a couple others. Lani Kai Pillbox traditionally has not been a trail that has caused fatalities, although this year there was one fatality there, which was very, very sad. So we're just kind of looking at this to reduce the number of injuries. Obviously, we don't want people hurt, but at the same time, it does take all the resources out of the community when they have to do an injury or a rescue on any of the trails here locally. There's only one ambulance on Kaileua, there's only three fire stations. So we're just looking at that. One of the other things I just wanted to mention that we did learn, you know, everything we've learned so far from the Lahaina Fire, and there's still more to learn, we are trying to apply that here, how we can make things better here in the event of emergency. And one of the things our department has done is, you know, Lahaina, by reports, that morning had no power and no cellphone coverage. And really, that hampered the ability for people to get information. So one of the things we're going to be procuring is something called a SAT-COW, Satellite Cell on Wheels. And if a neighborhood is cut off from all services, cellphone, landline, everything, we can drop one of these devices in a neighborhood, and it's got a few-mile radius. Depends on how big the SAT-COW is. Some of them are half-mile, some of them are like 2 to 5 miles, but can be a node for people to text and even get some limited Wi-Fi through this node that we could drop into a community. Now, if every community on the island was down from cellphones, that would not be, there aren't enough of them to drop into all the neighborhoods. But if Kaileua, for instance, or part of Kaileua, had lost all their cellphone coverage, we could drop one of these devices into Kaileua. It has its own generator, and then folks within the radius of the catchment of that tower would have communication. So that's just one example of what we're doing based on what we've learned from Lahaina to just try to make our responses better. So that's all I have for tonight. One other just quick thing, we are, the mayor did convene with the Managing Director a wildfire working group, task group, that we will look at all of these issues that came out of Lahaina and issues we have here. And evacuation is key in that as well. How do people get out of an area when there's an emergency, especially if a lot of people need to leave? So a lot of this stuff's going to be on the table, and I'm hopeful, over the next three to six months, we'll have a lot more information. Because I'm seeing what everybody else is seeing, the hills just look drier to me. Things look drier. There's not as much rainfall, at least it feels that way. I'm not a meteorologist, but that's just kind of my, you know, overview when I just drive around Kaileua, it just looks dry. So I think, again, good things will come of this very tragic event in Maui. And that's kind of all I have today, unless you have any questions.
We might have a few. David Ayer?
Yes, hi, and welcome back. Appreciate your presence here today. I wanted to speak with regards to the construction plans that are underway for the Kanioei Community Garden. The gardeners in that garden area are opposed to the current plan. We just want to be sure to go on record that we are opposed to the current plan because it is reducing our gardening space by about 30%. It is putting in a 180-foot redundant fence line that we believe is unnecessary and overly expensive for that area. And we would like to ask also that there be an environmental assessment done with the tearing up of all of our garden plots that we expect, and the tearing up of all of the adjacent areas, that we would expect that all of that disturbance that will be occurring in the soil and going right into Kanioei Bay, that there would at least be an assessment done as to what the impact is going to be on the environment.
Okay, I can follow up on that and get back to you. But I remember vaguely, we had kind of, there's something about this in the past, but with these specifics, I can get some answers for you.
Thank you, yes. We've been trying to get some progress made on all these points, and so far, we've not been able to get any progress made on those points.
Okay, other questions? Levany Lipton?
Hi, this isn't exactly a community, Kaileua community issue, but it has implications. And it has to do with staffing. So, you know, my thing is always that we need to clean our storm drains, and we have a very small crew. So I was told that in order to hire additional folks to do this important job, that it would call for a reorg, I guess, of the department to put in those positions, and I'm assuming this relates to budget. And so I would like to know what is that process to do that? And so I would like to know what is that process to do that? I'm just, I'm curious to know, like, what is the procedure? What are the steps that need to be taken? Because it's entirely unsatisfactory that we have one storm drain cleaner that goes from Kiona Beach to Ikahe Park. There's just one person assigned to that with one machine. So there's no way that we can maintain our infrastructure. So I'm curious to know, what are the steps that need to be taken? Mahalo.
So I can find out specifically with DFM and storm drains for next meeting, but just in general, when, when we, when we in our department want to reorg, we sit down with the managing director, Mike Formby, that's, that's all our directors, that's all our bosses. We'll meet with him and we'll say, hey, this is how we want to, it's either shuffling positions, moving them from one side of the department to the other, or sometimes creating new positions. So we, we kind of, to put that on a piece of paper and what the structure looks like, and then if it's adding new positions, then we have to place those positions into the budget, and generally the budget's done a year in advance. So, for instance, last year, we wanted to put a new, a 12-hour ambulance in town, so we had to put that on paper, where the ambulance is going to go, who they report to, and, and that's the reorganization. Then we had to put it in the mayor's budget last year for this year, which got approved, and it's, it's six more positions. And then, so that's the financial part, and then the, just the approval part. And then for, for this new ambulance, now it just, we got the approval in July, that's when the new budget year started. So just this past week, we went to the union and then presented them with the plan as a consultation, because it's a change in working conditions, and usually when you're adding positions, they're pretty agreeable to that. And then once that's all done, then it's a matter of requesting budget to fill the positions in HR, and then we put an ad in the newspaper internally at the city, and we then will hire new people to be in those positions. So adding positions, hiring, that's a longer process, but if it's a shuffling where, let's say, there's a bunch of positions in DFM that they can't get filled in some other area, they can actually move those positions in a reorganization to, let's say, this new storm cleaning branch, division, you know, in the Windward side, and then it's more just, you know, talking to the managing director and talking to the union, it's not really as big a deal budgeting-wise. You know, hiring in many departments in the city is challenging, and so that, that's sometimes an issue too, if there's just, you know, too many vacancies in a certain area, having to hire somebody. But I would think the first step would be to get with the folks at DFM, their leadership, Department of Facilities Maintenance, who maintain storm drains, and see about the reality of having a reorganization on paper where they could expand the services for what you want and think you need for this area for the storm drains, and then they could go through the steps themselves. But in a nutshell, a long-winded nutshell, that, that's what's involved.
Jim, to add some context, and my, my numbers might not be exact on this, but I think around 2018, a number of these storm drain filters were added in the Enchanted Lake area to cut down on the pollution entering Enchanted Lake, which then subsequently enters Kailua Bay. And it was 110 of these filters were installed. We, we have learned, this year we have learned that, that once they're cleaned, they fill up again in about two months. So a cleaning cycle should be six times a year, but these 110 had never been cleaned. So from 2018 to 2023, they had never been cleaned, and then this, earlier this year, they were cleaned and discovered they were full again in two months. So, and, 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 and so, okay, what's the division of labor to do the necessary maintenance on, on these necessary improvements, right? And, and, and then we found there was only one employee covering a vast region, and so that's the context of the question.
And if I can add, that one employee often gets siphoned away because that crew is tasked with weed whacking and repairing the sidewalks, and so storm drains are really low on the priority list. But we want to promote our beautiful Kailua Bay for our families and our visitors, so it doesn't seem like we're taking care of it.
Okay, I think we've given context. Other questions? Evan Weber.
Well, hi, Jim. My name's Evan Weber, I'm not sure if we've met before, I joined the board in August, so good to be meeting you, that's true. Yeah, two things from me. First of all, proof, proof will be in the pudding, but if what you're saying about the restrooms and the improvements that you're going to make are true, you've single-handedly restored my faith in local government, so I hope that that'll end up being a good result. But I did want to clarify a little bit more about what the need there is. Yeah, cleaning will be really great and important, but it's also just the fact that there's never hand soap in the, the restroom, so installing hand soap dispensers, and then having that staff that you're going to come serve them, plan to regularly fill those dispensers, is great. And also just wanted to clarify that it's not just the district park, but all of our public restrooms that have these issues around cleanliness and ability for hygiene, including the beach parks. Our beaches make the county a lot of money, so if you guys could just give us some soap and toilet paper and hose it down every once in a while, would be great. So that's that, on that, just to clarify. And then, I'm not sure, were, were you here for the fire report earlier?
I was.
From the HFD?
I was.
Great, so then you heard a little bit about what I shared regarding the community fire planning that's been happening in the Kahau-Lani Kai region with the HFD and, and community organizations and institutions. You mentioned evacuation plans, and yeah, the Kiva Ridge is, as HFD shared, a huge fire risk, and that area in particular is potentially, potentially the most significant evacuation risk on the island due to the ongoing traffic management issues in the Lani Kai Loop and the surrounding Kailua areas. On a sunny day, on a holiday weekend, traffic can be back up for hours, people can't leave, emergency vehicles can't get in, it's always a life or death situation for our residents, many of whom are Kapuna and have ongoing health problems, but it really, the Lahaina situation underscores how it could be a life or death situation on a mass scale, numbering in the thousands. And so there, our, our understanding is that for over a year now, we've been told by DTS that there was going to be an updated draft traffic management plan for the loop, and it was revealed recently that their, that draft may now finally exist, even though it's a year overdue. So I was wondering if you could share any more information about that, if it is forthcoming, and what opportunity there will be for community feedback? Will it be presented to the neighborhood board before it's finalized, et cetera?
Yeah, I, I can look into that, and you know, my department is not only EMS ambulance, but it's also, you know, Ocean Safety Lifeguard, and we know we have emergencies down in the Lani Kai area, both in the water and, and up at the Pillbox. But I, I, again, I just think, you know, we, even though there, we know what's happened in California and other parts of the mainland, I don't think we really, as a state, envisioned the kind of firestorm that engulfed Lahaina. And I think a, a lot of us, or at least me, I think about older houses all over Oahu, in Kaimakii and on the Windward side, and, and really all over the place with, with this density, and realize that it really could potentially happen anywhere here, and we really do need to relook at how people move out of areas that, where there could be danger. I mean, I know we've thought about it with respect to tsunamis, but now we have, have this also to consider. So basically, yeah, point well taken.
Great, look forward to a response about that, DTS plan and the opportunity for community engagement before it becomes finalized. Mahalo.
I'll just add a comment before we go on to the next question. I was stationed in Charleston, South Carolina, a few times in the Navy, and Charleston area is called the Low Country, L-O-W, low, because it's like one foot above sea level. And the, the main road in and out of Charleston is Interstate 26 that goes to the High Country, Columbia. Going north or south, up and down the coast, it's still all Low Country. So I-26 is the only evacuation route. So they had hurricane and all these pictures of I-26 West jammed, I-26 East, not a single vehicle, and they said, you know, we can do better than that. So hurricane evacuation plans, both east and west-bound directions, all became west for the evacuation. And that would have maybe helped in Lahaina, but it would also help egressing Lani Kai, egressing Kailua, egressing other places, but it won't happen on the spot. It'll only happen if it's been planned for and rehearsed and people know how to implement it. So I would encourage that to be part of the considerations. Steve Trecker.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Jim. Real quick question about the SAT communication system that you were discussing earlier in the event of an emergency, assuming it's, for example, a hurricane and there are issues with communicating with people in Kailua about evacuation or other reasons. How, you said this SAT thing is, a communication system is dropped into places, how would it be dropped into Kailua? Is that by helicopter or?
No, no, so, so there's different sizes of these, and it's called a SAT, S-A-T for satellite, and then COW, like a, like a moo, like a dairy cow, but COW as C-O-W, cell on wheels. So the biggest, most powerful ones of these are actually an actual, like a big van, like a, like a big truck, like a duly truck that can drive in. The next version down from that is like a trailer that you would pull behind a truck, and then the next version down from that is like a giant suitcase. There is one on island right now that AT&amp;T owns that we can use in an emergency anywhere on the island, that's, I think it's pulled by, I think it's a trailer that we would pull with a truck. Our department right, right now immediately is getting another one that's on a trailer, and then one of the ones that's like a giant suitcase. And I can send the board, the, the pamphlet, not pamphlet, brochure from AT&amp;T that describes what these, these, these devices are for the, for the techies out there, or people who are kind of interested in how they look. But if Lani Kai or Kailua Town were cut off, we would potentially bring one in with a, with a pickup truck on a trailer with its own generator, and we would set it up. Now, if it's in the middle of the hurricane with the, for hurricane-force winds, we wouldn't do that, because then it would get destroyed. And I also just want to emphasize, with the two we're getting, there's one with AT&amp;T, I'm sure the city's going to be getting more of those, we would not be able to do the whole island. But we would be able to do isolated communities if that, only that community was having an emergency. So like in Lahaina, it was generally only Lahaina that was affected, they could have put one in Lahaina. But like I said, if it's the whole island, then we would, you know, we would deploy what we had, but it wouldn't necessarily be able to cover everywhere. And the range on these is different depending on which size you get, like the truck, I think is, you know, five miles, whereas the trailer may only be like two or three miles. So they, the, the range gets smaller as the device gets smaller. But before and after the hurricane, it could surely be in a community.
Right.
Thank you.
David Laia.
Hi, Jim, me again, sorry. Regarding the showers that are at the beaches, I go to Sandy Beach a lot, and there's a, all the showers have been replaced with these little trinkling faucet heads, and I'd like to know whose decision it was to replace all the faucet heads with this particular technology, because all the guys that I body surf with would like to know who they're going to be, who, who they should be swearing at, because the water level and the pressure that comes off that, that showerhead is like, why bother take a shower? And, you know, so that, that's one question, but, but the other question is, is there a shut-off valve? Because we, we're seeing the shower that's, that's got a special handle that doesn't shut off, and if I wanted to save water, I could shut off the valve normally, and, but this, these valves just keep on going, and so there's no way to shut off the, the current valve. So one, it's, it's very weak, two, it, it doesn't even shut off, and, and there's no backup shut-off. So I have a video here on my, on my phone, 34 seconds of, of the water just pouring down onto the concrete, and, and there's no way I could shut off the valve. And, and I left after 34 seconds, so the water just kept on going. And, and so it really bothers me that, you know, that there's no ability to shut off the water, and that we're being denied a decent shower.
And that, and that's a sandy beach or, or everywhere?
Well, sandy beach is where I typically go, so that, that's where I'm experiencing that.
Okay, I think that's a look up. We're not going to make presentations by 9:00 PM, but we, we are very time-critical now on, on our meeting. Are there any other questions for Jim Ireland tonight? John White.
You, Chair. Jim, good to see you back. If I could just request that you would provide the amount of vacancies on the Windward side for these different departments, kind of like what Levani was alluding to, it seems under manned and other staff in a lot of sectors. You know, I include law enforcement in there, and ambulance, fire, lifeguards, we need to make sure we, we man these positions so we can, we can serve our community. And also to curtail on that, who's, who's looking at this on a yearly basis, since it takes a whole fiscal year to reorganize and include in the budget? Maybe we need to up those numbers so we can always have an accurate account for the, the shortfalls in the manning.
Yeah, I can look up those numbers, and I agree with you 100%.
Amber Granite.
Hopefully, quick, just in light of what you were saying about Lahaina, just wanted to know what the mayor's order of operations is going to be as far as sounding the siren, and then what happens if, again, similar, like no electricity, no cellphone, I, I hear you about the SAT cow, but want to make sure that, like, the sirens are going to be in place and that the right people are going to be there to push the button, just want to check on that.
Yeah, and the, the mayor's made it very clear that, you know, you know, he is in charge of the city and county of Honolulu, is the mayor. Managing Director Mike Formby reports to the mayor, the directors report to the managing director. He knows who's in charge, we know who's in charge. The Department of Emergency Management, which is the new name for civil defense on Oahu, is run by Hiro Toya. He's got many, many years of experience in emergency management. He's extremely competent and vigilant, and, you know, when we have emergencies on Oahu, we are all in the EOC, all of us. And I'm, I'm very, very confident in the team that we have here with police, fire, Kiro, and you know, and our boss. And I don't think they would hesitate to turn on the sirens if they needed to, and there's multiple ways to turn on the sirens, they can do it from our JTMC dispatch center, where police, fire, EMS, and ocean safety are in the dispatch center, that they can also turn them on from the EOC, which is- They can also turn them on from the EOC, which is in the faucet building where we all go. And, and sometimes man that, staff that 24/7 when there is an emergency. So he, he, like I said, very, very competent, you know, just an outstanding person, very well-versed in emergency management, but I don't think he would hesitate to send out any type of alert that was needed to warn people. And, and you know, my thought in the past was he was overly cautious. He would call us into the EOC for these, you know, modest flooding events, not the real major ones, but just the modest ones. And sometimes I would kind of think, well, are we, you know, kind of overreacting? But in this line of work, you know, you can't really overreact because you may miss something and you can't, even if it's one in a million, you don't want to miss it. So I'm very confident in that team. And I, I know he wouldn't hesitate to turn the sirens off, on if we needed them. One of the issues that has come up that's not related to the city is the states let us know that not all the sirens are working around the state. And we do need to follow up with the state about that to make sure that we do have 100% functionality of all the sirens across, across not only Oahu but the whole state. And I personally, right now, don't know which one of, one of them aren't, are not working, but I know it is a number of them are not functional.
Okay, Carrie Weller, quickly.
Very quick. A couple things, James. Thank you for your wonderful service with your ambulances. I had the use of one of your ambulances in July and the staff was wonderful, okay? So I wanted to give you a compliment.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. And as far as the parks and all these facilities, there's always a janitor or somebody that cleans them. It seems to me that management always talks to management and never talks to the guy that actually cleans the bathroom. The one here in Kailua, he said the hose bib doesn't work, he's not allowed to wash down the walls anymore, he can't use Clorox anymore. And so, and he says that every time he puts up a dispenser, it gets ripped off the wall. So you need to start thinking like a prison. When prisons do things, they do it so you can't destroy the toilets, you can't destroy the, the toilet paper things and et cetera. You know, those cell towers you're talking about, on the mainland, we are completely in control of our cell companies in Hawaii through the PUC. And believe it or not, the cell companies in Hawaii per capita make more money than they make in the entire United States. So I would think that our legislators in our city and county would put pressure on the cell companies to provide those cellular units that you're talking about. And then another option might be the Starlink, because that has worked wonderful in the Ukraine and in Puerto Rico in an emergency. And those can go even on top of your ambulances, they're now completely mobile. So you might look at Starlink and, and the, the PUC and have the cell companies maybe pay for that service and have them roll it out in an emergency. Thank you.
Okay, got that, Jim. Amber asked me a question on a berm opening in the interest of time, I won't ask it here, but I'll go ahead and email it to you. Any other questions? Okay. Mahalo, good to see you tonight. Next is Governor Josh Green's representative, Erin Connor.
Good evening. Sorry I couldn't be with you in person, getting over a little bit of a cold and didn't want to be hacking up my lungs in front of everybody tonight. So I do have three things to report very quickly. When I last attended in August, I believe, there was a question about Governor Green recommitting to support zero vision. The response to that is both Hawaii Department of Transportation and Department of Transportation Services commit to approaching zero deaths and have each adopted and implemented zero vision, zero strategies. So we're on board with that request. The second request we're following up on is in regards to emergency and hurricane shelters, specifically in the Kailua area. There was a request for the list of, the order of which the buildings and schools would be retrofitted. Chair Hicks, I know you've been in communication with the Haime Administrator and have received a little bit of correspondence. I don't have much to add to what you have received except that please know that Haime, the state and the county all recognize how big of a concern this is, especially in light of Lahaina emergencies last month. And because it's such a big concern, they are looking into larger federal funding streams to be able to stand up one fully certified shelter in each county. Emergency shelters are a function of the county, as we know, and they're in discussion of determining which community or where the first location will be on Oahu. As far as the status of the current Kailua schools and buildings, none of them are certified shelters. They either have the roof or they have the windows, but they don't have both to make it identifiable as a certified shelter. Haime is also working on projects for individual homeowners to help make them, to make sure that their homes are safe in an emergency with the hopes that most people would be safe sheltering in place depending on what kind of situation we're encountering. You can expect to hear more about both of the projects in the near future. I'll make sure to bring you any updates as we have them. The third thing was about the calculation of estimates of the housing shortage we're facing in Hawaii. Unfortunately, due to a recent resignation with the governor's housing coordinator, we don't have the answers to those questions. So as soon as I, I'm following up and as soon as I get them, I will be sending you an email, Chair, prior to the next meeting so that you have that information ahead of time. That's all I have to report and I'm here for any questions.
Mahalo. And that, that, that's the math that supports 50,000 on the housing and on the hurricane shelters. There are designated hurricane shelters on Oahu, just.
Correct.
Okay, questions? Levani Lipton.
Hi, Erin, I just wanted to get a quick clarification. You said something about they're looking for funding to do one per county? Was that like one shelter per county? And how does that work? Like, we, can we have neighborhood shelters or like geographic shelters?
It would make sense to do so, but I think because of the cost of creating one fully certified shelter, there, the first step is to locate and set one up in each county. As they receive additional funding, they will expand for sure.
Yeah, there already are several designated certified hurricane shelters on Oahu. So Oahu, Honolulu County already has several. I think the other counties do as well. So this would only be looking at adding one more to the existing roster? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions for Erin tonight? Carol Mioshero.
Hi, Erin, just for clarification, you mentioned that the schools that are not certified in Kailua either have an issue, an issue with the windows or an issue with the roof. So couldn't there be some way to prioritize one school in Kailua and just deal with the roof or the windows? And then at least we'd have one shelter here in our community. It doesn't seem like it's, I mean, again, I'm, you know, I don't profess to know how much a roof costs, but I'm sure we could deal with the lowest hanging fruit, but at least prepare one shelter in Kailua. That's what we would really like to have. Thank you.
Totally understand, yes. I don't have that more information than what I was given, unfortunately, but it does, it is logical to make sure we have one, that we can make sure those facilities are, you know, stood up to, to help out in those emergencies.
Right, out of the eight that used to be designated and there are now zero, and the reasons why they were decertified are known, you know, figure out the low hanging fruit, which one of the eight would take the least amount of work to, to get certified was the gist of our question. Okay, other questions for Erin tonight? Okay, none online? Any, any resident questions for Governor Green's representative? Okay, thank you so much, Erin. Get well soon.
Thank you.
We move on to elected official reports, starting with Representative Natalia Hussey-Burdick.
Hi, everybody, I'm here online, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome, sorry I can't be there with you today, I'm visiting family, but I am still working remotely. As usual, I'm going to share my screen. I just wanted to report that the Ikahe Elementary students came, grade classes came to visit me at the Capitol. They, I asked the principal if they could open up the playground to the community a little bit more. I know that's been a kind of a big issue in that neighborhood. They said they're open to the idea, but they would love it if the community could help them out with the cleanup. That's one of the biggest expenses they have with the community using the playground, is they have to staff a janitor to come and pick up all the liquor bottles and, you know, unhygienic things that they find on the playground on a regular basis. So they do have a monthly cleanup this month, or well, the next one is in November, on November 18th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. I'll be there and I hope you guys can join us. Had a couple of questions last month that I'm happy to report the responses to. I looked into the cameras at Women's Community Correctional Center. They have awarded the contract to CML Security to install those new cameras. The work is actually going to begin very soon on October 9th and it'll continue through the 20th. And I'm doing a site visit in November. They said they can't bring that many people onto the site at one time, so I'm going to basically email the people who helped me write the bill on the board and invite you to the site visit and see if we can get some other elected officials to join as well. Somebody had asked about what are the plan for the Atherton preschool that just shut down and somebody else had asked about Polly Palms, perhaps shutting down and turning into something else. I tried contacting both and I don't, I wasn't able to find a good answer on these. The Atherton preschool is a private preschool, they're not quite sure what's going to happen next. And Polly Palms, even the, the occupants of the offices that I know were not aware of any plans to sell. So if, if whoever asked that question could contact me on the side, I'll try to dig deeper and, and find an update for you. I do have an update on the Kailua High School athletic improvement. So the legislature awarded 7.5 million in the last budget. They're currently awaiting release from the governor, so maybe that's something that the governor's representative could follow up on. I know that they're super busy with funding priorities for the Maui wildfires, but just if you could check on that, that would be great. And they're working on temporary light fixtures in the meantime until that funding is released from the governor so they can do the permanent fixes. I got several emails about the status of the Kalahao hillside, which is all owned and managed by A&amp;B. I asked A&amp;B what they're doing about wildfire mitigation and management and prevention. They responded that they are doing regular inspections and maintenance. They've additionally contracted a consultant to address the broader area and expand their maintenance program. And they're in contact with the Honolulu Fire Department to discuss best practices, maintenance and access with a special focus on the areas abutting residential properties. And they encourage the public to contact their Kailua management team with any questions or concerns. I think I saw Dana Harvey on, online, on the WebEx. So if you have any questions, you can call them, 808-548-0901. A little bit of an update for the Kailua wastewater treatment facility. You may have heard that the state previously had ordered, issued a notice of violation and order, fined $434,000. Now the federal EPA is coming down with a consent decree. This is in addition to the previous one they already had, and it's requiring them to install additional disinfecting stations and to clean their, to update their bio towers, do some major renovations so that they don't have more mechanical issues happening, both of which were already on the docket of things that they were going to be doing, but this just mandates that it has to happen and provides deadlines. And shifting gears, real quick, the wildfire prevention working group, I'm on, we will be posting our draft report on this website on November 1st. And we're working on a public hearing. I'll report the date of that at the next neighborhood board meeting. And then our final report will be due on December 15th. I just want to reiterate the governor's request for people to open their home to wildfire survivors. They're currently situated in hotels, they're in a lot of hotel rooms, and that's not a good long-term solution for them. So if you have an extra room in your house in Ohana unit, there's a program to provide funding for you if you just call that number there. And that's all.
Okay, mahalo, question for Representative Hussey-Burdick. Jade Laia.
Hi, Natalia, it's Jade. I just wanted to update you, I followed up with Atherton Family Trust. They don't.
Oh, thank you.
They do not have an intention to sell at this moment.
Okay, good.
And the Atherton Family Trust property must be used for academic education purposes. So the intent is to get another academic business in there of some sort. But at this.
Wonderful, sorry.
At this moment, they have no intentions of selling as far as what they answered over the phone, so teamwork.
Thanks, sorry Jade, I was unable to find that information. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Move on, Councilmember Esther Kiana.
Aloha and good evening. For those parents out there, if you haven't seen the advertisement for our Department of Ocean Safety Fall Junior Lifeguard Program, this is for Keke from 11 to 17 on, so at Kailua Beach Park, it's going to be on Friday, October 13th. And if you can't make it, then on October 10th, at Kunananiho Beach Park in Waianaealo, and Kim of my office is going to insert the blurb so that you're, that you can sign up for the junior lifeguard program. Let's see here, restricted parking zone program. Many of you have probably seen in the newspaper that it has passed and it is likely going to be signed by, by the mayor. And what it basically does, it's, it's, it's had 10 hearings, it was very contentious. But in short, Kalihii has always had a pilot program. And so what the bill essentially does is it, it makes permanent the Kalihii program, restricted parking zone program, a permitting system. And second, it provides the administrative authority for the director of the transportation services to be able to consider establishing a restricted parking zone. The other difference is that right now it's for free and people are going to be charged for it. It's applicability to areas like Lanikai. And Evan, the reason, and I'll explain about the Lanikai Transportation Management Plan, which was being held up because of this, is that the Department of Transportation Services, even if I told them just finished the report because it's already basically finished, they felt that they didn't know what authorities the city council was going to do as it would apply to someplace like Lanikai. And so let me just say this, there is so much concern about beach access that two members inserted provision, one which would prohibit a restricted parking zone in an SMA district, and then another council member, which was Chair Tommy Waters, inserted one which would prohibit half mile from the beach. The SMA was actually broader, so it was a half mile that passed. And maybe I don't have to talk about other stuff because this is a really important, I know, for everybody. It is my position that the city council, regardless of this act, has the full authority to establish a restricted parking zone regardless of the parameters of the spell. Having said that, there is the lack of an appetite for any system to make permanent or something akin to the three-day weekend. And so one of the things that I'm expecting from the Lanikai management plan, but it has not been finally signed off, is that since there was debate between HPD and ETS on whether or not across the bikeway path, those, those areas were restricted, HPD said no and ETS said yes. The outcome is going to be, they are going to, they're supposed to come out and say that there will be no parking on both sides of Ala Papa and Mokulu'a. And I'm expecting a lot of outcry from others in Kailua and elsewhere who want to access the beaches. So anyway, I would talk about. So anyway, I would talk about resiliency hubs with your board members. I know there's interest, so my time is up, but if anybody has any questions, I'll take your questions.
Board members, first, questions for Councilmember Keina. Okay, residents. Mr. Hugh, you'd use the microphone, please.
No city official has any right to speak to any resident like that. I don't care how many times you appeal it. Okay, well, I'm sorry that he did that. As I discussed with you earlier with Chair Hicks, in light of Director Quano's response letter and both of you being very dissatisfied with his response, I will facilitate a one-on-one meeting with Director Quano, Chair Hicks, and yourself. And I'm sorry about your individual appeal.
Okay, other questions? Evan Weber.
Yeah, sorry, I was just taking notes. Mahalo for that update, Esther, about the traffic stuff and responding to my question there, and also for your continued advocacy around this for all the different parts of our community that this affects over the years. My just clarifying question, and maybe we can follow up too, is just in terms of the debate between HPD and DTS, I guess, can you just clarify who won that debate and where you see the ultimate authority for this decision? Yeah.
So I gotta tell you, the debate is what in general happens all over Oahu, and that is without proper signage. It's hard sometimes, and HPD doesn't enforce all the time because right now they have the current authority to enforce on both corridors of the loop. And they are not, they stated that officially at a hearing, and DTS came forward and they disagreed. So I know for certain that unless I have a report, which is why I would not recommend trying to delay the report, the report is not the end-all. Should the report state what I'm expecting it to state, then I was told that immediately signs will be going up in Lani Kai to make clear, similar to what we did on Eleku Drive going to Midpap. We had to fight for signage to go there, and we were told the law says you don't have to have a signage, and I said, I want signage. People could barely get through if it's parked on both sides to be able to not just go to MidPacific, but also to go to the condominium, the townhouse in the back. So similarly to the loop, signage will likely go up, making clear that there's no parking. Now, I need to let you know that no parking will apply to residents as well. And again, I'm not trying to confuse you, but it is my position that despite this restricted parking bill that just passed, that was really uniquely tailored for Kalihii, just to make it permanent, because the authority is only one per year, and because it was adamant opposition, I had to insert an amendment to sunset the administrative authority by the DTS director to five years. So that was never, ever the solution for Lani Kai, because Lani Kai, you have to have legal parking to be able to implement an RPZ. Can the city council create a unique structure, hybrid structure, for Lani Kai akin to the three-day weekend? And my answer would be yes. The likelihood of that passing is not good, given the fact of what happened with prohibiting an RPZ that was legal half a mile away from the beach, or the entirety of an SMA, which in the case of Lani Kai and elsewhere on the Windward Coast, the swath of the SMA map, if you go online, is huge. It's huge. It's bigger than a half mile.
Okay, thank you. Jade Lio.
Esther, just a quick thought. Wouldn't it be common sense that safety overrides convenience? I mean, if you can't get a fire truck through there, or you can't get an ambulance through there, it would seem to me that somewhere in this great big plan, somebody has to have an ounce of common sense that it is a safety issue. And maybe we should ask Tommy if his auntie or his cousin lived there, would he want the ambulance to get to them safely and quickly and get them out? Or would we just want people to have fun at the beach?
The data from EMS is that they get in and out of Lani Kai just fine. One whole year's worth of data.
But your point is well taken.
The fire truck doesn't though, because I've been there at Boat Ramp and watched the fire truck have to get out and ask people to move their vehicles.
Your point is well taken, and public safety is one of the elements that's being made, one of the elements being considered in the plan. I don't want to lead you to believe that the only issue will be about the signage. They were required to look at the totality. Now, in concert with the management plan and the mayor's undertaking of a risk assessment for fire, as well as your own subcommittee's interest in resiliency hubs and disaster preparedness plans, I think all of that collectively is a healthy dialogue that needs to move forward. And I'm hoping that in concert with the Office of Climate Change, who I already talked to today, and the City's Department of Emergency Management, as well as our DOD partners, that we could work collectively with the Neighborhood Board and the community at large to develop our plan, our own plan, separate from governmental plans.
Okay, we only have 30 minutes left, and we have two presentations tonight, so are there any urgent questions? Is it urgent?
Urgent to me.
Go ahead.
Esther, I know that we spoke about this. It has, again, to do with the Kanioli Community Garden, the fact that the gardeners, 77% of our gardeners, have objected to the current city's plan of reducing the gardening area by 30% and installing 180-foot redundant fence line. We've requested an EA be done, and today I'd like to understand what the petition process is, because in the bylaws, there's a petition process articulated in the bylaws, but nobody in the department seems to know what that petition process is. So maybe if you could help me understand what that petition process is supposed to be?
Petition process to stop the improvements being made at the Kailua?
To object to the farm, to the current plan, and yes, to try and get some kind of a change.
I'll find out. I think, quite frankly, this is a dialogue to be better discussed at the Kanioli Neighborhood Board, because there are a lot of stakeholders there. But I would like to say, if you are not familiar with the issue, it is an issue of city liability. I'm not in a position to defend the Department of Parks and Recreation, but I will find out the process for you. But I need to let you know, when you are asking about an issue, you need to be able to present all sides so that everybody has a fair assessment of what is at hand here. The city is potentially liable for encroaching onto a nearby property, and that not remedying it is actually gonna lead to...
Nobody's trying to do anything having to do with the liability that you're referring to, which has been in existence for 45 years, okay? So we're not trying to address the liability issue.
Yeah, we're getting bogged down. The request is for the petition process.
Thank you so much.
Okay, mahalo. We move on to Senator Jarrett Keahokaloli. Representative Scott Marioshi. I went out of order. Representative Lisa Martin.
I have a couple things I wanted to announce. One is that on the 10th, at Lani Kai Park Pavilion, we're going to have another Little Fire Ant event, and it's gonna be a workshop, so very hands-on. We're all gonna learn together how to survey our yards. We're also gonna look at ants to ID them, so everyone gets an idea of what it is. Little fire ants, I cannot stress enough, from those who have had to live with them on the Big Island, they are horrible. And bizarrely, we are the hotspot for the spread on Oahu. So this is kind of a tipping point where it's actually very easy to treat them. Yards where people have identified they have them, the Hawaii Ant Lab will come in for free. They will provide technical assistance, they will provide the baits. There's two kinds of baits you need to use, one on the ground, one in trees. They're safe for pets. They can be made safe for, if you have agriculture in your yard. It's a really big deal. We really don't want this taking hold on Oahu. If it spreads more, it may. I hope that, I tested my yard, it's super easy. You put chopsticks in peanut butter and you put it on the ground where you might get ants. And then if you have ants, you put it in a Ziploc bag in the freezer. You can send it in, again, for free. They will look at the ants, tell you whether they're little fire ants or not. If they are, they'll come to your home and they will treat your yard and try to reach out to your neighbors. So this is something, it's not too late, it's a really big deal. We have this event at Lani Kai Park on the 10th. You can't make that time, that's okay, you can test on your own really easily. Reach out to my office, we can help you. It's not hard, but if we don't get ahold of the problem, and there's seven active cases in Lani Kai, there's cases in Kealua Kills, there's cases in Manui. So this is a big deal, it's in our neighborhood, and we don't want this to be the beginning of, you know, not being able to enjoy our yards, not having our pets be safe. So that's one thing. The other thing is, we recently had an event for, I know there's a lot of discussion early on about the homeless, and it's an ongoing issue with mental health problems. We had an event that I organized for all the different service providers for the homeless in Waianaealo and Kailua, which are both my district, and trying to get them to network and coordinate their services better with each other, including with the community policing team. And we also had some presentations about something called ACT, which is Assisted Community Treatment, which is something that's legal in our state to basically, for people that are severely schizophrenic or severely bipolar, you can have basically a process, a petition that goes through the judiciary, and they are forced to have treatment. The issue is, when people are that sick, they do not realize that they're sick, and they don't realize that they can benefit from treatment. In the past, it really wasn't used. Part of the team, the public defender, was charged with fighting the process. Three years ago, that was taken, they were taken out of the equation, so now there is nobody actively trying to prevent any of these petitions from going through legally, which made it just too difficult and too expensive to do them. And the reason I wanted to bring it up here is it's not only for people that have been on the streets for 10 years, you know, living a very hard life. It's also for, if there's anybody in your life that is having early psychotic episodes, this is something that a family or, you know, household member can petition. And legally, the Attorney General's Office in the state has to provide free legal assistance in the process for that family member, so that it's, you know, it's not too difficult to negotiate or too expensive to negotiate. This is something that is an option and has proved to be very, very life-changing in a positive way for people, and I hope we use it increasingly more in our state, you know, as one tool in the toolkit. I appreciate that Levani came to that event. This week, I had another meeting for Behavioral Health at Adventist Health Castle. They are definitely trying to expand their role as well, so there is a lot going on in that area. I know it's important, it's important to me too. With that, I'm open to questions.
Online. Levani Lipton.
Yes, thank you, Rep. Martin. I wanted to appreciate that invitation. I learned a lot. It was good to see such a turnout, too, to help with this community. And just to add to Rep. Martin, we are having the Director for Behavioral Health at our Houseless, Addressing Houselessness in Kailua Meeting, which is this Sunday at St. Christopher's Episcopal Church on Kainalu at 1:00. And so it's in the community room, so we're having someone come and talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, Little Fire Ants, Tuesday, Lani Kai, 6:00 p.m. Self-testing is simple. Test results are free, and if you've got them, an army of people will help eradicate them. Serious stuff. Okay, Nicole Gray, representing Representative Jill Takuta.
Hey Chair, sorry, Nicole's not here, but I'm in place for her. My name is Telecia Posesic, and I just have some quick announcements for our office. So the Military Nomination Deadline is coming up for our office on October 16th. Our office already sent letters out to the Second Congressional District Schools, so we're just hoping to make sure that everyone knows that the deadline is coming up soon. Similarly, the Congressional App Challenge that our office is hosting has a deadline coming up on November 1st, and we also sent out letters to schools as well, just to make sure that's on everyone's radar. Our office will also be sending out our monthly report soon with more details regarding Rep. Takuta's actions. And if you do want to stay connected with our office, you can go ahead and reach us at our website, which is takuta.house.gov, or you can call our office at 808-746-6220. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Any questions? Okay, thank you. We move on to reports from members who attended other meetings. Okay, we have two presentations tonight. We're about a half hour later than where we hoped to be. First presentation is 1318 Mokalua Drive Draft Environmental Assessment in a Special Management Area. We have Jim Hayes from Planning Solutions.
Okay, thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to present. I'm here to present a residence, a replacement residence in Lani Kai, and there is an SMA major permit being sought. This is a map of, coming up, this is a map of the SMA area and where the project site is. And as the council person mentioned, the SMA is quite large. Only residences that are on the shoreline are required to get SMA permits, so that's why you don't see more of these. But that's the project location there in Lani Kai. And it's currently a vacant lot with homes on both sides. There were previously a couple dwellings, a couple structures on the property that were removed in preparation for new development. So that's the way it looks today, houses on both sides, right on the shoreline, and as you can probably tell, there are sea walls up and down the coastline along this portion of Lani Kai. This is a photo from 2015. The site, like the rest of Lani Kai, is Zoned R10. The site is over 17,000 square feet of vast land. It used to be a little larger. This is what it looks like from the road. There's a fence, sort of typical Lani Kai shoreline development, or shoreline look. A design, very conceptual at this point in time of what the development will be. Again, the black is existing residences, both sides of it, and then in the blue and green is the proposed house. And the vertical hatch- And the vertical hatching is what we call the Sea Level Rise Exposure Area, or Solarexa. That's the exposure area once the sea level rise reaches an elevation of 3.2 feet. This is based on the university modeling of the area. And it is primarily based on shoreline erosion. But there is a seawall here and so shoreline erosion is not anticipated for quite some time. There's a shoreline setback, which is the sort of bluish hatching on the shoreline side. It's a 40-foot setback currently. And then there are, of course, yards that need to be adhered to. The main point with this is that the proposed development complies with all applicable rules, regulations, and codes. No variances are being sought. No unusual development is being proposed. It is a single-family residence. I believe it has four bedrooms. It is not a monster home. It is designed for a single-family dwelling. There are few portions of it that are two-floor. But most of the development will be a single-story. But there will be a couple second-story elements to it. This is what it'll generally look like from the street looking towards the shoreline. Again, very similar to other developments in the Lani Kai neighborhood. That is the extent of our presentation. We will be seeking an SMA permit major. So there will be a public hearing in the future. And then after the public hearing, which is held by the Department of Planning and Permitting, the project will go before the City Council, where the zoning commission will first take it up and then the full council will take it up and pass the permit by a resolution at the City Council. So any questions are welcome.
Okay, questions. Steve Trecker.
Real quick, so what plans are in place to monitor for EV bones on the property? And how much construction will involve penetration of the existing soil for footings or utilities?
Well, there will undoubtedly be some excavations for foundation elements. It is anticipated that an archaeological inventory survey will be conducted. And that survey will be performed per a plan approved by the State Historic Preservation Division. Those things are in the works. But those are anticipated elements of permit conditions. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Donna Wong.
Can you show us on the map again with the 40-foot setback where the house is going to be placed?
Well, I can put up, but the house goes close to the 40-foot setback. The existing residents on both sides are very much closer to the shoreline. But the proposed house would be, let's say, 41 feet from the shoreline.
So it isn't within the 40-foot setback?
It is not within the 40-foot setback, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and this is on the agenda for Planning, Zoning, and Environment Committee meeting on the 3rd Tuesday for any follow-up, if there are community follow-up or deeper questions. It's our process. We checked the box tonight, but we get another opportunity to look at it more carefully since we're only getting the presentation tonight, which is, by the way, on our meeting material Google Drive. Okay, other questions online? All right. Less than 10 minutes. Thank you, Jim.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, our other presentation tonight is Protecting Mauna Wai Forest and Loi. Update by the Trust for Public Land Project Manager, Reina Ramalite Hayashi, DLNR Forest's Division of Forestry and Wildlife Oahu Branch Manager, Marigold Zoll. Aloha.
Aloha, I think... Aloha, Kira Hicks, Donna Wong. Thank you for having us tonight and having us at your committee meeting last month. I'm Reina Ramalite Hayashi. I'm a project manager with the Trust for Public Land. We're a nonprofit land conservation organization. For those who don't know us, our mission is to protect land for people, ensuring healthy, livable communities for generations to come. We've protected about 77,000 acres across our islands, partnering with different communities, and protected 49 special wahipanna. We're super excited to update you on our Mauna Wai Forest to Loi project. And we really just want to, first of all, mahalo this board for your long-time support of this project. I believe in 2017, you passed a resolution opposing the subdivision and development of these lands. In 2018, you passed a resolution supporting the conservation acquisition of these lands. And then in 2022, last year, you supported a resolution in support of public funding to acquire the lands for conservation. So just big mahalo to you all for your ongoing support. And just a refresh for those of you who are new to the project. Mauna Wai Forest and Loi is comprised of 1,084 acres of really important watershed conservation agricultural lands in Mauna Wai. It was once a food calabash, umekai, for all of Oahu. And for many years, just to acknowledge, Hui Mauna Wai Kauai Nui, which is a coalition of residents, of descendants, of Kailua-based Hawaiian and environmental organizations have really been fighting to protect this land. And we just wanted to honor three kukuna of the Hui that have since passed on. Uncle Az Stender, Doc Burrows, and then very recently, Dr. Paul Brennan, for all of their leadership. And we really, you know, walk in their footsteps. And the Hui has really led this charge, this vision for returning these lands so that they can become ainamomana again and feed us again. And then we have the Pope Sisters here from the Hui as well as other members of the Hui tonight. So this next, this next map is an aerial of the lands we are working to protect. The lands in orange are Mauna Wai Forest and Keiko Ova'i. Those lands will be going to the state of Hawaii, DLNR Division of Forestry and Wildlife. The lands in purple are Palau'a'i. And they will be owned and stewarded by the nonprofit Ho'ouaaina. The lands in blue are Makali'i. And they will be owned and stewarded by the nonprofit Ko'uluakalana. This is a 3D version of the same map and it really shows you sort of the landscape-level impact of this project in Mauna Wai. You can see, basically, the entire Mauna Wai stream system flows through these lands. It's five tributary streams out into Koi Nui, the largest remaining wetland, and Fish Pond in Hawaii, and out into Kailua Bay. The state, the lands going to the state include, basically, almost all of O'Lehmana Mountain Range. The lands in purple are traditional loi kalo lands. The lands in blue, Makali'i, have been longtime used for agriculture as well. A couple of really important updates for the board. The first is that the Trust for Public Land, we have negotiated an option agreement and signed an option agreement with the landowner, HRT. And so we now have the property under contract and the right to buy the land for conservation. So that was just a very huge milestone for us. The other, like, phenomenal update is, you know, in partnership with the state and all of our wonderful community partners, we've raised the $33 million that we need to buy this property for conservation. So that was a huge feat. And thanks to you all for your support. And thanks to our community partners and the state as well for just all of the hard work it took. This is sort of like a summary of the project structure. Again, Mauna Wai Forest and Keiko Ova'i will be under state ownership, 908 acres. We raised about $23 million, $4.95 million from Forest Legacy. We thank our legislative delegation for supporting that. $11.2 million in REPI, Readiness Environmental Protection Integration Funds. We thank Marine Corps Base Hawaii and Colonel Bevan for their support with that funding. $7 million in state CIP funding. So we really thank Senator Chris Lee, Representative Scott Matayoshi, and the entire legislature for really supporting the project. And then Palau'a'i, again, will be owned by Ho'ouaaina. The city and county of Honolulu and Hawaii Land Trust will hold a conservation easement over the land, protecting it in perpetuity. We have raised $6.2 million in City Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund. And a huge mahalo to Councilmember Esther Kiaaina for being a champion for both Mauna Wai and Palau'a'i projects with the city. And then $2.6 million in state legacy land conservation fund. Similar funding for Makali'i, which will be owned by Ko'uluakalana. $3.3 million from the city's Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund. $1.4 million from state legacy land fund. That was a mouthful, but all of the details are here and you guys have a copy of this presentation. Yeah. Really, really phenomenal. So yeah, just another update. It's a little bit of a more technical update. So basically, we've asked HRT, the landowner, to submit consolidation and subdivision application. And the purpose of this application is solely to help achieve the conservation acquisition. So you will recall earlier that I mentioned the Forest Legacy funding. That funding can only be used to acquire forested lands. But because rural Hawaiian golf course is a part of the land the state will be getting, we can't use that funding to buy the golf course. And so we really needed HRT to subdivide out that golf course and create a separate parcel. So what you are seeing on the left, the lands in orange, the area of the golf course is referred to as Keiko Ova'i. The lands in right, so you can see there's three parcels here, right? Three TMKs. On the right-hand side, you can see now the golf course is carved out in the middle and there's now four TMKs. And really, the sole purpose of that is to ensure that we can really leverage those federal funds to protect these lands. The other added benefit is that we were able to readjust the boundaries for both Palau'a'i and Makali'i to really accommodate the long-term stewardship and management of these lands. So the Palau'a'i, which is in purple, will be gaining about additional 13 acres along the golf course access road. And that really helps provide them better access, but also includes the portion of Mauna Wai stream that runs right alongside that parcel. And the benefit to that is that that front parcel has an old awai. Again, it's the traditional kalo, loi kalo lands. And so the stream, you know, allowing for stream restoration, access to the stream, management of the water and restoration of the stream will really allow for those lands to be productive again. And then the lands in blue, Makali'i, are also gaining another about 13 acres. And really, the purpose of that is to include the access into Makali'i Valley as well as a spring that is really, really important for, again, restoring traditional agriculture, agroforestry, and making those lands productive again. So really, those two boundary adjustments are really to make sure that the vision can be accomplished and management and security of the lands are also possible. So that's kind of the details of the subdivision. Again, like, it's somewhat of a scary word since you guys have opposed it for so long, but it's really to achieve this conservation success. And I think I'll pass it now to Marigold from DOPA to share a little bit more about Mauna Wai Forest and just all of the incredible public benefits.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Marigold Zoll. I'm the Oahu Branch Manager for the Division of Forestry and Wildlife with the Department of Land and Natural Resources. And I'm just thrilled to be partnering with the community to actualize the dreams that you all have had for this special place. And we're really listening to the community and wanting to provide the kind of access that will help to provide for the community to manage the land in a responsible and respectful way in a way that honors the rich traditions that have been shared with me for the years, especially with the Hui. And so with the funding, like Reina said, the forest stewardship funding really can't be spent, which is the golf course area. So it needs to be just applied to the surrounding areas and the other funding for the CIP and REPI funding to fill that gap. So it's really kind of... We're just so thrilled to be at this place so quickly, really. And I know that a lot of people have been working on this for a really long time, but all of a sudden, we're at this place. Thank you so much.
Okay, mahalo. Any questions? Levani Lipton.
Very quickly, thank you for waiting so long to present. Just for the benefit of the folks on Olelo and the audience, can you just explain what this land will be utilized for and also the importance of the conservation easement? Because that was something that I learned that was new for me in the Planning and Zoning meeting.
So the state land would be designated as a forest reserve to the forest reserve system. That goes through a public hearing. So, but that is our intention. And the forest reserves are set up to provide forest products, appropriate recreation opportunities to preserve the natural aspects of the land. So that would be the intentions, to have a work forest land. The conservation easement, that's an overlay that protects in perpetuity those lands for the purpose of the conservation easement. So this basically will be part of traditional kalo and kaulai area agricultural practices. Speaking just of the state, the situation that we have, it's basically an agreement that removes part of the development sector of land and then takes into the land the long conserving. The city will hold that. It realizes the interest that they buy and then they monitor. So to make sure that... So basically, no matter...
Mahalo.
Donna Wong.
Thank you for coming and presenting to the community. I know I've received a lot of questions about... Well, they've received flyers. People in Mauna Wai receive flyers and asking what was happening. So could you send me a copy of the PowerPoint so that I can send it out to community members that ask and want to know a little more about the project?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to post it on our meeting materials as well. Thank you. Okay, other questions? David Laye?
Yes, I, thank you. I wanted to understand, once the property is acquired and now it's turned over to these various organizations, what is the plan for doing sustainable development or maintenance? How are they going to pay for the maintenance of that area?
So for the state land, since we would be purchasing the golf course, the lease rent would be used to manage the state portion of the estate. So that would be a huge benefit in this particular action. A lot of times, when the state acquires land, there is an additional benefit for management that comes with it. But in this case, we look at funding to actual... But in this case, we look at funding to actualize the division of this space.
Yes, I could invite our community nonprofit partners up. But generally, you know, they both are very fiscally sound organizations. They get all kinds of support from both private and public funding sources. In addition, the added benefit of getting state legacy land and city funds is that you can then qualify for the stewardship, the, basically, the corollary stewardship funds that come out of that same pot of money. And so both nonprofits will be eligible to apply for those funds as well. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Okay, well, huge milestone. Thank you so very, very much. And we're happy to, also, to see you at this place. Maybe a little bit ahead of schedule. This is great. Oh, good luck. Next order of business is approval of minutes for our September 7th meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes for the regular meeting? Hearing none, minutes stand approved. Committee reports. Any committee chairs wish to amplify on their published report? Levani Lipton?
The minutes that went out have been revised from my Kailua Water Quality Subcommittee meeting. So the updated minutes, it was a scientific presentation on the Genki Ball Study. So the updated minutes are available at the NCO website, and they've been updated as of today. Mahalo.
Okay, any other committee updates? All right, mahalo. Next order of business are committee membership motions. Would anyone like to join a committee? Or any other committee changes being proposed tonight? Any online? Okay, no changes. Committee agendas for November are due to me Sunday, October 22nd. And this meeting is adjourned at 9:55.